Good evening and welcome to the Rockford, uh fossil Park Center. The Floyd County Fossil Park Center here in Rockford, Iowa. Glad to have all of you here today. Mark Kien, Chairman of Board of Supervisors. Uh we have the going to mission here and their Chair Dean Jaden. We're conducting these as official meetings of both boards. And so, uh I will call the meeting to order and ask the supervisor to uh consider approval of the agenda. We would like to amend the agenda as presented to include review and action to set the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors as part of our agenda regarding um the consideration of a wind ordinance resolution and ordinance review. So all we're doing is amending the agenda to include setting another meeting. Is uh I'd consider motion to do that.
I'll tell them.
One second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Keifer, seconded by Jorgensen to amend our agenda to include in tonight's agenda, setting the next meeting of the Board of Supervisors regarding a workshop or further consideration of the order. And with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Chair Jaden.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes. He was made a motion to amend the agenda.
He didn't approve.
He didn't approve.
Thank you, Director. Our district board votes, the law is in favor of the vote. Uh to amend the agenda to include setting a um uh Tuesday meeting. You can say, uh, we didn't say, uh.
All right, wow.
The agenda has amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
One second.
The move by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Keifer, to approve the amended agenda. Through the discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye. All right, aye. Thank you, Director. Turn over the meeting to Chair Dean Jaden.
Thank you, Mark. I just saw when this was another day with the sun and finding zoning permission. Uh I'd ask Gloria to just do a roll call.
Sure. Uh Dean Jaden?
Present.
Pam Murray-Lines?
Present.
Ben Robinhouse?
Present.
Guy Carpenter?
Present.
And Brad O'Lotham.
Uh as we indicated, this this meeting is is a workshop. Uh we're gonna be hearing some presentations from two different energy companies. But with that, I'm going to just turn this over to John, who's had important meetings on our uh permits development.
Certainly. So I'm John Robbins, I'm a planner, community planner with North Iowa Area Council Governments. We we Floyd County is a member of our organization with our members with various things like planning, zoning ordinance, things like that. Um so uh um we put this workshop together to educate our board and commission and the public um about process of developing a wind farm and various topics that are uh involved with wind farm regulation and their impacts and that sort of thing. So the first thing we're gonna do here is we're just gonna schedule, we're uh on a schedule. Um we're not gonna take public comments at this time, we're just, we'll probably will be taking questions. Um later on, later during the meeting, the first we'll do presentations with uh um brought in Mid-American Energy and Alliance Energy. Um they represented is uh William Doherty from Mid-American Energy, he's a project developer um with Mid-American Energy, they operate the existing wind farm in Floyd County. And we also have Justin Fox, who's a senior project manager with Alliance Energy. Um neither of these companies have a project in development currently. Uh so they've been kind of the typical time to help educate us about uh uh wind farms and that sort of thing. Um so this first thing we'll do here is we'll schedule, we're gonna schedule uh listening sessions where we will take public comment um from the public. Uh and these are gonna be dedicated in just uh the public comment and additional questions. Um so that'll be the first thing we'll do here real quick. So we're gonna do that, um we're looking at doing it in mid-Jebruary, mid-February, so. Um that said, let's move on to the next uh item. Uh we had looked at um open by email potential potential dates. The first one was uh February twelfth, that's a Monday, and potentially at six P M. How does that work for everybody's schedules?
We will open on Monday, that's a board meeting day, so.
So if that works for everybody.
Yeah.
And we'll be here for, uh we will have.
So, okay, so that's good for most everybody. So if we could do that at um six P M, I I will be reminded that we're not going too late for everybody, but also the afternoon.
Yeah, there's a, he didn't have five thirty P M in E O C, I'm not kidding.
Uh we can do that here, um that works. That one's scheduledized here. For six. Okay, so I don't want to hold back here. February twelfth, February twelfth, that's a Monday, at six.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Uh probably someone else in this meeting, yes, the Northern Department for Hyper Deadline.
They took their option to Friday.
Well, so this release says the twenty-second, and the deadline was the eighteen. Their deadline Friday, for Wednesday.
The next one, we're looking at the end of nineteenth, uh possibly Tuesday, the twentieth, that's P M, that's. Probably do that at courthouse in E O C. This would be also a listening session, since you dedicated this, we're gonna need to the public to express certain issues for issues.
The only thing I have there, the assessors conference board meeting get changed? That's.
Yeah, yeah, the change of that meeting to uh March ninth, so.
We're gonna February twentieth?
Yeah, if that works, or that was a date that we're floating by email.
You'll see, on the E O C.
Subject to Senator, the Floyd County Courthouse.
Wait, wait a second, I think emergency management is still that night, though, the twentieth.
Yes, there there was discussion regarding the the fact that there'd be a month, seven dates. And um I think it was, and as I said, it's very hard to move through that.
Yeah.
So the day of question is the February twentieth?
February twentieth is.
Because.
I I think other emergency managements don't have in their meeting.
Right, otherwise, yeah, choose alternate date, um maybe Thursday to the twenty-second that week.
Thirteen has the.
Thank you, okay. Um because also you do twenty-first, how was that, that's the one they wouldn't say that week.
They found what's there, the six block?
Yeah, generally, I mean. It's. The twenty-first. Okay. I want to give this E O C council that at the E O C. So Floyd County. We'll advertise out in the paper on the county website and all that.
So we're discussing a half-fulling joint meeting of the Financial Zone Commission and the Board of Supervisors on Monday, February twelve, and at six P M here here at Fossil Park Center. And Tuesday, February twenty, at six P M at the courthouse, E O C.
Tuesday, February twenty.
Wednesday, February twenty-first. Wednesday, yes. I entertain a motion to to set those meeting dates.
Yep.
So we'll.
Second. Do you need a motion from both boards?
I I think we should.
I'll make a motion to uh put the meeting date February twenty-first at six P M in E O C room. And Monday, February twelfth, here at the Fossil Park, at six P M for both meetings.
One second. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, expected by Keifer to set the next meeting of the joint workshop agendas of the Financial Zone Commission and the Board of Supervisors at Monday, February twelfth, at six P M here at the Fossil Park Center. And Wednesday, February twenty-first, six P M in the E O C, coming up. Um for the discussion. Um any comments for anyone listening on the phone? Hearing none, uh those in favor of the vote, who say aye?
Aye.
What's your care? All right. All right, so we'll now uh be going over to a presentation uh by Will Doherty. Um. He's projecting.
Yeah. This is up there, it's going.
All right, thank you for good. I will, I'll try to speak up so everybody in the room can hear me, so as John mentions, uh my name's Will Doherty, I work for Mid-American Energy, I'm a project developer over there. Uh I've been project developer with Mid-Am since about midway through two thousand twenty-one. Uh been with Mid-American for a little over five years at this point in time. Um so John has kind of asked me today to just kind of present at a high level considerations that uh developers, utilities um look at when developing a wind farm and what that process kind of looks like, timelines, studies, requirements. Um you know, how the county's ordinance plays with development, how different, you know, regulatory bodies and government agencies also have says an approval authority over over these projects at the end of the day, too. So my goal today is to just kind of give everybody, without going too deep into the weeds, a high-level overview of of project development for a wind farm specifically. Um and then I believe uh Justin be going a little more detail and as John said, yeah, you know, we're open to questions as well, hopefully this kind of spurs some some thoughts, some questions for the public, for the commission and the board as well. Um so I'm gonna just kind of start it off with just some some high-level history for Mid-American Energy. So we are a subsidiary of Berkshire Hathaway Energy, we're headslower in Des Moines. Um but we are the largest utility company in the state of Iowa uh with one point six million electric and natural gas customers combined across the state. We do have some service territory in adjacent states, Illinois, South Dakota, and Nebraska. But all of our wind facilities, our generation facilities are located within the state of Iowa. Um we are regulated through the Iowa Utilities Board. So this is just a quick overview of our renewable projects across the state of Iowa. Um we have and just opened up, oh, sorry, one second. Do you want me to, that might be on my end, let me check quick. That work?
Yeah, that work, that works.
It does still work, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I'm sorry. Um. So we have, we just completed our thirty-eighth wind farm in the state of Iowa, we have a long history. So we built our first wind farm in two thousand and four, um and we've been building ever since with uh renewable assets across the state of Iowa. So you can see up here, um these are ordered sequentially when they were put in service. So our latest one is the Chickasaw Wind Farm, just north of here a little ways in Chickasaw County. Um that is our our thirty-eighth wind farm that we uh just got into service at the end of December. You can just kind of see some high-level numbers on the screen, so over seven thousand five hundred megawatts of total naphtha capacity across our entire renewable fleet. That does include solar as well, um even though small, solar is a very small portion of our generation fleet. Um that equates to about two point three million um average Iowa homes that we can serve with that uh capacity, and that's about thirty-four hundred wind turbines across our fleet. Um that might be a little outdated now, I think it's closer to thirty-five hundred now at the Chickasaw Projects. So, and then just kind of further down on the history as well, so um this is just kind of showing a shift in Mid-American's generation capacity um since the year two thousand. So you can see up there on the screen, our generation capacity was broken down to three categories, coal, natural gas, nuclear, and other. Um and then it just kind of taking those percentages and comparing them to what's on the left side of the screen, generation capacity as of two thousand and twenty-two, um we've invested, like I said, very heavily in wind assets in the state. Um it now makes up over sixty percent of our total generating capacity. And what does this translate to? And uh why are we doing it? So as a company, we have a goal, um our renewable energy vision, it's our green advantage goal to meet our customers' demand, the amount of energy that our customers use on an annual basis um with renewable energy over that annual timeframe. So renewable energy is an intermittent resource. Um the wind doesn't always blow, sun doesn't always shine, but on an annual basis, it's taking that generation output, comparing it to our customers' usage, sending that to the I U B to get audited and approved. Um and so in two thousand and twenty-two, um we actually were able to achieve that for the first time ever um as a company. Um that is, it was a fairly heavy wind resource here in two thousand twenty-two, we don't expect that to be the same case for two thousand twenty-three. Uh but it's something that we continually are striving for, and it's something that as our renewable energy offerings to our customers continue to grow, our customer base continues to grow as well, so those goalposts continue to move further and further down the line as we add load to our system. And we've been able to do that, too, with uh the fifth lowest rates in the country for investor-owned utilities. Um and this is just kind of more of the same, you know, this is just kind of a culmination of it, what we paid on wind projects uh to, you know, counties, the capital dollars to install those projects, and then uh county landowner payments as well for our partners uh that were leasing land for and have easements on um in these projects. So kind of getting into um how wind farms are developed, this is also kind of blending into history. So a lot of people ask Mid-American as a utility, why we've invested so heavily into wind energy, not looking at alternative sources such as solar or battery energy storage. Um this map up here depicts the wind resource across the continental U S um at a uh height of about eighty meters above uh ground level. And just to kind of simplify it down, so the purple in the center part of the U S there is some of the highest wind speeds um averaging approximately, you know, roughly eight meters per second annually. Um and then you, as you kind of go out toward the coastlines a little bit, it it tends to kind of dip his um lessen down to, you know, roughly five, four meters per second. So if you look at the turbine maps across the state, across all the U S, you'll see majority of them are located, you know, in the central part of the United States, and that's because that wind resource is so high. And so when you kind of boil it down to just the state of Iowa here on the screen, this is kind of a large explanation for why we've invested so heavily into our wind resource. It's very abundant for renewable resource, um and this is what kind of differentiates us from a state like California. California does have, you know, more renewable capacity on their grid than the state of Iowa, they are much larger, they have a larger customer base as well, larger loads. Um but majority of their renewable resources are built upon solar, and that is because they have a a greater solar resource than they do a wind resource. Um Iowa, it's flipped a little bit, we don't have as good of a solar resource as some of the southern states. Um but our wind resource is fairly high, and so what that translates to is a higher capacity factor or the amount of time that a wind facility will run on an annual basis. So um less downtime for the units, more energy production for our customers, it just translates to a better investment and a better resource overall for generating electricity. Okay, so these are some of the things I'm gonna kind of touch on, as I said, in high level. Um so get into how a wind farm is developed. So before we can even begin construction on a wind farm, we need to make sure all of our Ts are crossed, Is are dotted. Um we need to perform several years' worth of studies technically. Um we need to be in the field, uh contracting with some of our consultants on the environmental side, um contracting the consultants on the the technical side of things, which I'll get into as well. There's a transmission component as well, because you need to be able to have a means to get the energy onto the grid to serve customers. Um and then you also go through a plethora of government agencies in order to get various approvals and recommendations um as well, before you can even apply to the local level, uh which we'll be talking about in what this whole meeting is about, you know, talking about after this presentation. So just gonna throw these up on the screen quick, this is not completely comprehensive, but just some of the very high-level, you know, studies that are incorporated from the environmental side. Um you know, we have eagle and avian use surveys, uh we have bat surveys, raptor nests, uh surveys, rare species screening reports, uh we have site characterization reports, we uh get consultations from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, uh we also do cultural resource studies. We do wetland delineation studies, both on desktop and on the field, and then we also have phase one ESAs that we perform as well, I'll get into some of these more in-depth later on. And then on the technical side of things, um we have wind resource studies that will tell you um you know, what the resource is at a specific location, this can be multiple years' worth of data that goes into um helping identify, you know, the the appropriate unit to put at a site, the appropriate turbine model. Um microwave beam path studies, um identifying, you know, FCC licensed beam paths, uh radio frequencies in the project area that should be impacted, mitigation steps that are required to avoid that. Um aviation studies uh for AV, uh for air traffic, new generator transmission studies. Mid-American mostly deals with MISO, the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, that is the transmission system that we are a part of. Um so there's a a long, comprehensive study process that you have to go through there in order to get new generation resources onto the grid. Um sound and shadow studies, wake loss studies, FAA determinations hazard that kind of goes in line with the aviation studies as well. Um micro sighting, geotechnical, and then site optimization. So how a wind farm is developed, so uh initial project inception, so some of the high-level considerations whenever we as Mid-American are looking at developing a project, um kind of falls into these four categories, generally speaking, um there are, you know, obviously special considerations or circumstances and various scenarios. But generally speaking, and that's kind of the whole theme of this, this is, you know, the high-level considerations for developing a project. So as I kind of touched on already, it was transmission line availability. Um secondly, you have to have a balanced county regulations, so in state of Iowa, as I'm sure most of you are aware, um the regulations fall to the counties to regulate, um it's done at the local level, it is not done through statewide sighting practices. There are some states in the U S that do have statewide sighting, but in the state of Iowa, it's done locally. Um you have to have land availability as well, so you got to basically make sure that's um, you know, land isn't taken up with existing easements already. Uh it's not encumbered through any other variety of projects. Um and then other considerations as well, these might be things that are like sensitive areas, municipalities, parks, conservation areas, things that are specific to local communities that we should take into consideration when developing a wind project or any renewable project in general. So that's kind of high-level consideration. You're looking at an area that you want to, you know, develop a project in, what are some of the betting items before you kind of trudge down that path? And so, and I apologize, this isn't very aesthetically pleasing to look at. Um so I kind of wanted to put all those studies up on the screen and then sequentially put them through, and this is, once again, roughly speaking, the three different, you know, initial, mid-stage, and late-stage developments of a of a project and where they kind of fall respectively, and some of the considerations that we take into play. And so from a project study standpoint, you know, initial development, um actually, let me start on the the county side and landowner community side. So um since these are regulated at the local level, uh you know, county, community buy-in is paramount, these projects are are and really can only be developed through voluntary participation. It's one of the few facets of being a utility where eminent domain does not come into play. Um so there has to be community buy-in, there has to be participation from local landowners, there has to be um balanced regulations in place um for these projects to even be deemed feasible in the first place. So some things that we do in Mid-American is, you know, we do project kickoff meetings with landowners in our development area that we are targeting. Um we do one-on-one meetings with landowners, negotiations, consultations as well. This is consistent throughout the entire life of the development phase um and the construction phase of the project, and then even kind of transitions into the operations as well. But it's kind of beginning that dialogue with county, getting into dialogue with individual landowners to see if there's a fit there. Um from the project study side of things, so the environmental side, it's what you're looking at, you know, in beginning phases as you've kind of kicked off your projects, um is some of the more longer lead time items, things for consideration. So avian and eagle use surveys, so this is something that um we perform during the development phases of our project that ultimately goes into our habitat conservation plan that is filed with the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Um because it's about responsible sighting of renewable projects um and mitigation steps that can be taken in order to, you know, prevent any adverse effects to the environments or any of the animals as well. Um we do bat studies, so identifying if there's, you know, any endangered species within the the project area, if there's any suitable habitat from that. Consulting the U S Fish Wildlife Service and the D N R and what those appropriate setbacks would be. Looking at, you know, potentially uh different turbine models that might be affected as well. Um raptor nest surveys, that's a field survey that we go around, we have consultants that basically survey a project area, um plus an extra boundary on the outside of it, um documenting all sorts of raptur nests, this can be eagles, this can be um different species of owls, this can be um difference of falcons or hawks as well. Um and then, as I kind of said, the rare species screening report as well, so that's mostly a desktop study that's done through historical records, identifying if there's any uh rare species of uh animals or any rare species of plants as well, that should be taken into consideration when you are looking at developing a project. Uh from the technical side of thing, this is where the wind resource study comes into play. Um what, like I said earlier, you, a lot of times, um wind resource studies take multiple years to perform in order to get optimal data um to select turbine models, um and or and also to, you know, potentially aid with micro sighting later on in the project. Um some additional items to take consideration on the front end, and these aren't always the order that they go in, but these are orders that Mid-American has generally performed their development in. Um microwave beam path studies, so like I said earlier, FCC licensed microwave beam paths um that you can't interfere with. And so how do you cite around those, how do you take those into consideration? And aviation studies as well, so aviation studies um basically just kind of explains the constraints of the project area, your ceiling limits for turbines within certain proximities from airport runways, um how they may or may not affect um different navigational aids at airports, radars at airports, um the approach and descents at airports as well. And so this is basically a desktop study that takes into consideration um all federally licensed airports, uh you know, Department of Defense as well, so it takes into consideration uh military facilities also. And it kind of basically sets the parameters for where your expectations are, how high you can potentially build uh turbines without kind of triggering uh additional studies from the FAA and scrutiny from these other government agencies as well. Um looking at like mid-development, so as I kind of said, the community side is comprehensive throughout the entire process, it's it's updates to county staff, you know, looking at um some of the counties where you might have more extensive tiling systems as well, it's it's acquiring tile maps from those counties also to take into consideration um to start building out, you know, counties have regulations around uh drainage agreements, tile agreements, that kind of stuff. Um having, you know, a little bit of foresight on the front end prior to continuing down the development pathway is valuable. Um it's about, you know, spot event sponsorships as well, being a part of the communities, county fairs, this this is being a utility in state of Iowa, these are things that we do already. being a utility in state of Iowa, these are things that we do already, but it's just kind of doing more comprehensively toward a wind project or a solar project. From landowner side of things, this is where, you know, we begin the consultations of facilities. So we start as land gets signed up, you know, as we have a more clear picture of what setbacks from the counties are in play for participants, non-participants. As we get some of the studies back from the environmental and technical side of things, it's sitting down with landowners who voluntarily sign up their land to participate in a project. It's doing consultation, preliminary signing of turbine facilities. It's working with landowners to acquire land for a substation property. As I said, you have to get the the energy onto the grid. So we need to acquire a substation property in order to do that. And then from the studies and permitting side, it's additional site characterization reports. DNR, US Fish and Wildlife consultations, based on some of those results that we got back from the the previous slide for the, you know, use surveys, bat surveys, raptor nests, rare species screening reports, talking through that with them, see if they have any additional recommendations or things that we did not catch in those reports that we should flag. Cultural resource studies as well, so taking culturally significant areas or, you know, monuments or anything that into consideration to setback from, stay away from. And then wetland delineation studies as well. On the technical side of things, you know, once you have substation property, once you have an adequate amount of land signed up, you're able to enter into a transmission study with the the transmission operator. And I'm gonna speak specifically to MISO, because that's what Mid-American knows. I'm not sure how some of the other transmission operators do their their study process, but I'll get into that a little bit more in depth later on. But that's a multi-year process, so getting that going, going through that study process is the project success. Once you've started doing preliminary turbine placements, consultations with landowners, you can start looking at sound and shadow studies. Those are are completely dependent upon the type of turbine that you're selecting, the locations of the turbines, the topography of the area as well. So getting that understanding in the mid-stage development can help you later on begin to, you know, kind of tweak those turbine locations, trying to mitigate impact to adjacent non-participants, to participants as well. We go through wake block studies, that's mostly for the optimization of the performance of the wind farms. And then FAA determinations and no hazards. So once you have turbine locations, you file those with the FAA, you've already gone through your your aviation screening reports. You know your turbine size, your turbine limits, your locations, where those turbines could potentially be, the ceiling thresholds that they're at. You have to file determinations, no hazards. So basically, the proposed structure height of what your turbine will be with the FAA, it'll go through a screening process, they'll send it over through several government agencies, one of which is the DoD. They all review the locations, the heights above ground level, they will issue a determination back to you whether or not those are deemed hazards and any remediation steps or any follow-up items that will need to be sent to the FAA, once the wind farm is proposed to be constructed and post-construction. And then late-stage developments. Once again, communities, so securing land for operations and maintenance building, much along the lines of substations. So this is where we house our our technicians, our supervisors. They're usually based, you know, in municipalities where there's an abundance of public infrastructure such as power, you know, water, sewer, that kind of stuff. From landowner side of things, it's just kind of nailing down more concretely in micro sighting the the actual facilities themselves. So in late-stage development, you begin to have a better picture of what land is secured for a project. You're able to, you know, tweak your turbine sites within one second of your FAA filings. Where you begin to discuss with landowners as well, your collection line routings, your access road routings. You begin to show them, you know, what that's going to kind of look like with them, consult with them if there's, you know, any consideration that need to be made for kerosene, for tiles that we're not aware of, that kind of stuff. And then there's also, you know, in some of our projects, we've had sea foreign issues as well. So working with, that's just one example, but working with landowners to understand, you know, how their property works, how their operation works on their farm. Things we need to take into consideration, how we're impacting them beyond just the construction. Impacts that can be down the line that will need to help the landowners remediate. From the studies and permitted side of things, it's kind of finalizing those environmental studies, getting the wetland delineations and field surveys that we know what kind of SWIP permits that we're gonna need to to file for the projects, any water crossings or anything like that, phase ones, DSAs. And then from the technical side of things, like I said, it's micro sighting. It's geotechnical studies, which I'll get into as well, and then just site optimization. So that all, so I kind of boil it down to three buckets. So you have the land and landowners, you have the community, county, and then you have the environmental and technical. And that all, all those things that we just kind of ran through right there narrows down to turbine sighting. So turbine sighting, generally speaking, this is not a hard and fast rule, but generally speaking, every OEM, every original equipment manufacturer has slightly different recommendations based on turbine models and sizes. But generally speaking, you're looking at about, you know, six to 10, we use seven, six to 10 rotor diameters for spacing of wind turbines of along the prevailing wind directions, that's north and south. You're looking at about three times rotor diameter spacings, east and west, three to five roughly speaking. So turbine spacing minimums vary slightly. Minimum spacer requirements are calculated to maximize efficiency and output per wind farm. That's a part of the wake loss study that I alluded to earlier and some of the technical studies that we do. And then as you kind of get into your micro sighting process with these projects, they begin to have a domino effect on one another. So if you are, you know, micro sighting a turbine that is pushing up against that recommended spacing, then that will tend to push additional turbines down that windrow as well, if not completely eliminate one of them altogether. So it's about trying to maximize the efficiency of the park, trying to maximize minimize, I should say, the collection routing, minimize cost from that standpoint, also minimize impact to our landowners and participants as well. Going on, so the microwave and RF studies that we do for these projects, as I said, it it's it takes into account the FCC licensed beam paths and the fixed station radio frequencies facility in the project area that might be inversely impacted. And so what I have here on the screen is basically some 3D modeling that some of our consultants do to help us with the micro sighting of our facilities. So it's a, you know, an XYZ axis study, and it shows, you know, it takes into consideration the hub height, the rotor diameter, and 360-degree rotation of a wind turbine. And so this is done throughout the entire project. This is just one small snippet. And it's just kind of meant to, you know, show you guys what that looks like from our point of view across the wind farm. Going on the next one, I kind of combined two of them. So the aviation studies, as I was talking about, the FAA basically requires us that any structure that exceeds 200 feet needs to be submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration for aeronautical studies to determine whether the structures may be a hazard to air navigation. Things that they've taken into considerations are imaginary services, in-route airways, radar system interference, military airspace training routes, approach circulating areas and more. And then from the geotechnical side of things, you can kind of see that we do CPT testing, we do soil bores, standpipe, hyzometers, sorry, geophysical testing and electrical and thermal resistivity as well. And so what this testing basically does is, once we have our turbine locations determined, we're getting into the micro sighting phases, this is something that kind of gives our construction contractors and our OEMs, our turbine manufacturers, an idea of what the the remediation, if any remediation will be needed to ensure the structural integrity of these turbines, to ensure that they won't be settling over time. In case there's any over excavation that's going to be needed, any additional things that'll be needed on these turbines as well. Very rare circumstances. I don't know if we have any, but you could need geopiers as well to help stabilize the base. And so I was talking about a little bit earlier about the transmission queue process. So this is quickly, I'll talk to new generating sources. So when you're putting a new generating source on the grid, when we go through MISO for this process, you have to show you have appropriate amount of land security, you have a substation location picked out that you're just gonna be able to inject the energy into the system from. So basically, you enter into a queue position across the entire MISO territory, which ranges all the way from, you know, Manitoba, Canada, down to Louisiana. From the Dakotas over to, you know, Indiana or so. And so they take all these new generating sources on a yearly basis, they run them through an engineering study, and it basically just determines how the transmission system is going to react to that additional capacity being put on the transmission grid. And then specific projects get allocated certain dollar amounts for remediation to basically upgrade the transmission system to facilitate the amount of energy that you were putting on. This goes through three rounds, so there's, you know, capital that needs to be put forth each time that you have to to ensure your line in the the study process. Let's see, what else here? Now, like I said, sorry, the study process can take several years to complete, you know, the MISO study process online, I believe it says that it would take, you know, around a little over a year to completes. With all the projects that have been proposed recently, it's it's kind of extrapolated out a little bit to a two, three, four-year process. So long time to try, you know, basically ensure that the project can supply energy under the grid without any negative effects. So this is just kind of from the landowner and county side of things. So as I kind of touched on, you know, landowner participation is kind of kind of the the paramount issue for wind projects. There is an eminent domain practice that is enacted for these, so it's all voluntary. So having that dialogue with landowners, with developers, is important to a project success. County ordinances and limits, every county is different. Every county has, you know, very specific areas that are, you know, more sacred to them, different expectations for how turbines should be set back, different requirements for, you know, road use or decommissioning and all that kind of stuff. So it's working with the counties to ensure that, you know, all the boxes are checked, that we meet all the requirements as well, and then working with regulators, landowners is critical in order to get these projects developed. This is one thing that I just wanted to put up there as well. So you know, wind technologies improve a lot over the years, mostly through, you know, engineering of the actual towers themselves and the blades. This doesn't go all the way through 2024, I apologize. This is the most recent one I have from our internal resources. But looking all the way back at 2004, there on the right side of the screen are some of the original units that Mid-American installed. Those are GE units. And then over on the far right side of the screen, looking at 2020, you know, you're looking at a difference, 65 meter hub height on the left side, up to 107 meter hub heights on the right side. So the point I'm trying to make here is that wind technology has continued to advance. Generators have become much more efficient. They've become much larger as a part of that due through, you know, efficiencies and engineering. There's less weight, you can build them bigger, catch more wind resource and have more generation output from a single unit. So something to take into consideration as well, as the county is, you know, developing their ordinance is how, you know, this progresses over time, how units have tended to get larger, not to say that this, you know, trend line will continue at this pace, but something to take into consideration. And then that was kind of everything I had. Like I said, I just wanted to keep it pretty high level. I think I'm probably at time anyways. So want to turn it over to Justin or?
Yeah, why don't we? We'll do questions after Justin's presentation, so keep them in your head. We'll do, so we'll turn it over to you here, Justin. So Justin Foss is with Align Energy. And he'll kind of, I'll let you just take it away, I guess.
You want me to follow that? Geez. High standard. I'll just lock that.
It's gonna be a second. Why don't everybody stand up just for a second?
I did not mean to bore everybody, I apologize.
Okay, all right, do it. What's going on here?
Is that zooms?
But I'm sharing the presentation, so. Well, welcome, everybody. Thanks for taking some of your Monday night here. My name is Justin Foss. I work for Align Energy. Been with the company now about 14 years. I've been doing renewable developments since 2006. When I got tapped, because for years I had worked in TV news, I was a channel three for years. And I was a channel nine for years, and they said, oh, you know how to talk to people. And I said, well, sure. So they asked me to go out and talk to communities like yourselves to start talking about wind, wind energy in Iowa. And then in 2020, I got tapped to lead our solar development in Iowa and our battery development, and now it's pretty much whatever they throw at me. So I'm gonna go through my my stuff here real quick, and then it's it's really open questions for you. As as John said earlier, he invited Will and myself here. We don't have skin in the game right now. We don't have projects that we're pushing in in Floyd County. But what we do is have projects across the states. We have customers that live in Floyd County. Both Mid-Am and Align Energy, both have customers who live in Floyd County. We get calls from customers. We get calls from customers after we buy projects from other developers. And they will say to us, so you're the owner of this now, or you're where my energy is going, tell me about what's going on. And so we end up having the long-term relationship with customers, with landowners, with farmers here in the state. And so that's part of what what changes our land is that long-term view. So one of the projects that we built up in far north central Iowa lovingly, I have to say it that way, lovingly cast a shadow every now and then on my great-great-grandmother's grave. So we are here for the salt of the earth, just as the rest of you. So we'll kind of walk through here. You know, it's important to understand what we're dealing with, brand-new technology, really, I swear. You know, we're dealing with techno, we're dealing with resources that have been around. We're just finding new ways to use them. Right? Okay, so Align Energy's clean energy vision, right? Just give you a little bit of perspective. Why are we doing what we're doing? Right? By 2030 is 50% reduction in CO2 emissions. And then by 2050 is, you know, the net zero CO2 emissions. Right? So however we're going to get there, I don't know yet. I don't have the answer for that. The president of our company has told me that when he first started first started in in the early 90s, he says, if I would have stood up in a room and said, we're gonna power the the, all of our customers with wind and gas, I would have been laughed out of the room. And now it's what we're doing. So I can't predict the future, but what I can do is say today, the best options that we have So I can't predict the future, but what I can do is say today, the best options that we have. Involve a lot of renewable energy for our customers and supply. So if we continue to anchor ourselves on what works today. And how can we protect ourselves today for some future good? And not try and solve for twenty years, thirty years, fifty years down the road. We have wonderful engineers for solving for them. They don't have the answers yet, they will get it. Alright, we're gonna keep going. Uh, responsible development is a big thing that we push here at Lion Energy. Uh, look at myself, a younger, uh, just a kid there, geez. Uh, alright, so we're the third, uh, largest owner-operator wind energy by regulated utility, Mid-Am's got more than us, we're not competing. Right, uh, we are, or will be, uh, we are the largest owner-operator solar energy in Iowa and Wisconsin. Uh, we're just bringing on about a gigawatt in, uh, one point one gigawatts in Wisconsin, and we're. By the end of this year, we're gonna have about four, four hundred megawatts here in Iowa. We've got eleven wind farms, forty solar farms, and more in development across our footprint. And a lot of best battery energy storage systems. I'm gonna continue to call batteries as best. Yep, alright, this, there's a lot of acronyms in this business, I'm gonna really try. Cut them out, and if I say something that you don't understand, just let me know. Alright, so when we talk about, uh, wind energy citing considerations, a lot of times everybody, uh, says, well, what do you do, just go. Uh, promise a bunch of turbines to somebody, and then you're gonna go put them up and. You think about, uh, where do you sneeze, and that's where a turbine happens to go, far from it. It, it is, as you heard from Will, uh, a tedious process of finding the exact, down to the inch. Best spot for a turbine. We take into account several things, the barriers on my list, right, we take into account environmental factors. Right, wildlife, wetlands, sound, shadow flicker, cultural resources, cemeteries, my grandma, great, great grandma. Uh, roads, houses, non-participating landowners, towers, airspace, pipelines, wind production, zoning. Right, this here is a map of a example wind farm, this is a real wind farm. That, uh, that we developed, and you can see all the gray is, is participating landowners. All the purple is where we can actually build. Once we remove everything, all the other factors out, that's the areas that we can actually build them. So, when you think about an ordinance for Floyd County, as you heard from Will. There are many agencies. That it is their job to make sure to protect the environment, make sure to protect. Uh, the power grid, make sure to protect other things. Uh, so as, as a county, you're not on the hook for it. Right, your ordinances don't need to talk about protecting eagles, because the US Fish and Wildlife Service is doing that. Your ordinances don't need to talk about protecting the power grid, because the overall power grid, first. Uh, is, is doing that, right, so yours is really about what's the quality of life in the community. And that's where you gotta find the balance. Okay, I'm gonna keep going here. We talk about environmental setbacks, this is a different wind farm that we have operating, this is our Upland Prairie Wind Farm, which is in far northeast Iowa. Sorry, northwest Iowa, Dickinson and Clay County, it straddles two counties, that is common. For wind farms, because they take so long, so, take up so much space, because they have the turbines. Um, that you might have multi-jurisdictional, uh, wind farms. And obviously, in, in a project like this, we had to get, uh, a permit, the CUP, from both. Clay County and a separate one from Dickinson County. So i- it's a matter of how are you going to work with everybody, set expectations together, so you can do that. Again, this is another example of, we had all of that land. But there were only so many areas that we could go, because if you look here, for example, and I'm gonna do it this way. Right, so for example, we've got that habitat right here, so we're, we're out of there, can't be by there. Uh, you've got over here, you've got, uh, different prairies that we had to stay away from. Uh, the yellow, right, bald eagle nests. So we set back from that, here we get some forested areas. That we set back from, you've got some water, right, so you all of a sudden, you take the area and you trick it down, and truthfully, it's hard. To find enough spots to put a wind turbine, and that's why sometimes when you hear the vast numbers of how many acres does this wind farm span? Right, it can be in the thirty, forty, fifty thousand acres. But it's not. Right, because a lot of that land is ineligible, disqualified, great for farming, great for forestry, great for prairie, great for peasant hunting. But not good for the wind, for the wind farms. So that's why we're always looking to get enough land, make sure that we can, we can work with it. And put the stuff there considering all the constraints that come into it. Some of the constraints that we talk about, right? Iowa, ninety-five percent of the land is already disturbed in Iowa. It's already corn beans, or one of the other few. Uh, crops that are out there right now, but ninety-five percent of the land is already disturbed. And so we are trying to avoid river basins. From the other ecologically diverse areas, right, the prairies. Some of those, uh, the migration, uh, bird migration patterns are areas that we've had to avoid. Right, we think about bald eagles as a, as an eagle scout, bald eagles are important to me, and I believe they are important to everybody else. Uh, there, I, I, I had in here, their population is, is, is booming, is growing. And my, my environmental expert told me, he said, no, it has boomed, it is, 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 they are delisted now. So if we think about our youth, where we were all concerned about bald eagles going extinct. Not even close anymore, right, so now the US Fish and Wildlife Service is taking a different view at it. Right, in Iowa, we're seeing a lot of bald eagles, we used to always see them along the Mississippi River. Right, the cora is famous for them. Now, all of a sudden, we're seeing bald eagles in the middle of open terrain in Iowa, where there's maybe like one tree in a ten-mile area. And I'm saying to myself, we're saying to ourselves, why is there an eagle here? Where there's no eagle habitat, is it my, no? Pigs, hogs, yeah. Because they're able to get, uh, from the cathos, they're able to get, uh, freshly, fresh, uh, fresh meat. And so they're showing up in places where eagles have never traditionally been. Yeah. They eat it. So, so we're seeing eagles in the areas that we've never predicted to see before. And, and that's environmentalist, that's utilities, that's everybody, that's the ca- the casual eagle watcher, right, that loves them. So that is part of the boom that we're seeing right now. Uh, so let, i- it's great, but it means that the way we deal with them, the way we think about them has changed from what it was ten, thirty. Ten, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. So things change, right, uh, bats right now, uh, where maybe we were really concerned about eagles. Ten, twenty, thirty years ago, not as much now, we are really concerned about bats. Right, bats are a big deal, bats are huge for, um, crop health. Right, because they help, they, they help with the, the. They help with the insects, but they help with, they help, yeah, they help with pest control, uh, a- and they are, they're a big deal. Uh, and so we're seeing other environmental factors that are affecting bats, like the white-nose fungus. And so as such, wind farms are taken even more attention to. And designing ways, so either we don't build near them, we don't build near their habitats, or we curtail operations when we do the bat. Right, again, this is not a part of a county ordinance, this is a part of federal stuff. So how do we, uh, how do, yep, uh. How do we deal with that, well, one of the ways is we gotta figure out what's around, right, we not, we need to understand. Where we wanna go, so here's two pictures from our crews doing, working in Franklin County. Uh, the left is where they were investigating of, uh, a, a furry pothole. And understanding what wildlife we were dealing with in the area. On the right here, I actually took this while I was walking with them as they were, uh, putting up microphones in, uh, potential bat habitat area. Where they'll put up those microphones for maybe about a week, two weeks, just to listen. And they've got really sensitive equipment that can tell if you hear bats. And so then you can say, okay, do we have bats in the area, or we don't? If we do, then we've got to deal, we've got to change how we're gonna work, if we don't, then we're okay. But it's all this diligence that goes in, to try and understand, can we build here, and if we build here, what are the, what do we have to deal with? Uh, I was asked to talk a little bit about drainage, drain tile and whatnot, so here's a, a crew putting in some collector lines. So when we put a bit, a, a big turbine in the ground. We've got to get the power from that turbine back to the power grid. And so what we end up doing is you, you end up putting in collection power line. From each turbine all the way back to the substation, which is kind of string, all the way back to the substation. And then the substation connects to the overall power grid, right? Um, here, you can see that we're draining it, or we're putting it in, we're putting it in about four feet. And that's a magic number, because too deep, too much deeper than that, and we really start to make big disruptions in the soil. And it's harder to get that soil to get, it takes longer for that soil to rebound, to get back to normal production after we're done. And too shallow, and you might, you might sand it. Uh, most of the times when we go to decommissioning, right, if, well, what we find that most landowners want. Is that any assets that we have that are four feet in the ground and above, we're gonna pull out. Because the, the impact of pulling it out in the end is, is, is a positive. If there are times where we've got to dig something in for some strange reason, super deep. Right, we've got to go, maybe county tile is, is at four feet per, and we've got to go ten, right, for some strange reason. Oftentimes, that gets left there. Because pulling out of the ground when it's ten feet deep. The compaction and whatnot associated with doing that work, and the shoring and the trenching to get everything out. Leaves a much longer impact, and so what we hear from landowners is more often than not, look, it's four feet, I wanted out of there, but if it's under that, it's not worth the squeeze. And we see that right now with other assets in the ground, uh, abandoned pipelines that are in the ground. Um, you know, o- old farmhouse, uh, puddings and whatnot that are in the ground, if it's deep enough, let it lay. But if it's in that magical four-feet window, oh, that's, that's kind of, that's, that's what we see more, most often. That's the feedback that we get from landowners and farmers. The other piece that, uh, an improvement that we've got over the last ten years is now, anytime our crews go anywhere, all their routes are mapped on GPS. There's been a few times where we've had, uh, we've, we've, we've broken a tile line. And somebody has said, you, you need to fix that, and so we'll gladly go fix it, because we know that's what we have to do, whether responsible developer or the utility. Right, our, our phone number starts with six four one and three one nine, just as everybody else. Um, and there are some times where we're able to say, you know what, that's not us. A- and so now we can, we can mark exactly where we've been, because we know tile breaks over time, sometimes. And so what we've got is that protection for both us, the landowner, the county, we can GPS map every single place we go. On the, on the backend, that's great, because we can show where we might have problems in the future and to pay attention to. On the front end, when we get GPS maps from landowners, uh, on where they've got pattern tile. Or where the drainage district has got tile, we're able to coordinate that, and either avoid issues altogether. Or go in knowing that you're gonna have an issue here, and we're gonna fix it, you know that you're gonna have an issue here, and you're gonna fix it. So GPS has been a really big deal for us. We just bought a, a solar farm that we're gonna develop here in a couple of years over in Central Iowa. The drainage district from there, uh, the map that they handed us were from nineteen oh five. Hand drawn. And so we said, that's not good enough, so we are actually in the process of sending cameras on, on big hoses. Through those pipes to get an exact mark of where they are, so we know what we're getting into, before we even, before we even put a shovel in the ground. Right, this, that, that, that coordination, that protection for both the county, landowners, and us. We all work together, but it's been that forward discussion you talked about on the front end. Uh, I was asked to also just talk a little bit about sound, right, uh, turbines are pretty quiet. Uh, you all have some turbines here in, in the, in the county, I don't know if you've stood by them a lot. Uh, you can hear them sometimes. Um, I also know, uh, you know, I live in the middle of Tennessee, and I hear them. And when I go and visit my, my great-grandmother, far north Iowa, right? It's quiet sometimes, sometimes it's the noise, the wind, sometimes it's the train, it's forever. Uh, but what we're seeing is, uh, there's kind of a statewide standard of about fifty decibels. Which is noise that we try and all aim for, and where we measure that is from the outside of the house. From the turbine to the outside of the house. That way, once you get inside the house, it's even quieter, and so put that in context for everybody. It was like, how loud is fifty decibels, right, what is that sound by, so here we go, fifty decibels is, uh. Higher than what we've got going on right now, uh, normal conversation or background music, and once we get to forty decibels, because it's gonna go through that wall. Right, um, if it involves that, I, I, you know, we would consider worrying on that, not a good long-term idea. And below that, starts to be a little bit harder to achieve. Um, but it's about fifty decibels than what we're seeing right now, uh, is kind of that, that magic spot. Where, uh, landowners, homeowners who are in the area don't find it offensive. And don't really notice it. And above that, then you start to notice it. And after, dozen, you know, a dozen or more wind farms, uh, and from our colleagues who've got dozens and dozens of wind farms. That's a repeated number that we hear all the time. Uh, you saw this map earlier, yeah, Iowa's windy, that's why we've got wind farms here. Um, you know, and even on our, on our worst days, uh, where we've got the least amount of wind. For Iowa. We got more wind than just anybody else, right, that's why wind is important here, that's why we're pursuing wind. Uh, it is part of our diverse generation mix, but yeah, you gotta use natural resources where you got them. That's why we're building corn, uh, we've got the wind, that's why we're getting wind. That's why you see the efficiency here in Iowa. Alright, so here's the pictures of what it looked like for the foundation of a turbine, so you're gonna see in the far, uh, top corner here. That is, you know, once we've dug the hole for the turbine. For the base, it's about sixty feet wide. Uh, and that's about ten to twelve feet below gra- below grade. And then you're gonna see, they're gonna add some rebar to it. And you just kind of build it up and build it up, and eventually what would happen is that, when we go to decommission these. Right, so we say four feet is about what we want, four feet is about the middle of this pyramid. Alright, so you're gonna leave this, this is gonna stay. But about four feet, this is, you, you know, great, ground level is about right to here. So you're gonna dig down four feet, so it's about the middle of that pyramid, that's what gets removed in the long term. Here, you can see it, just adding more of that concrete there, uh, to, to what it looks like to find a fate. And they still had this bottom picture down here, they were still adding more fill around the area to bring it to, to a gray level of being. Here's how we're lifting turbines these days, uh, we're getting better crane technologies, which means that we're able to bring in smaller cranes. Which means a less, a, a lower impact on the roads, lower impact on the fields. As well as not only for installation, but when we have to do maintenance. When we've got to do major maintenance on the, on the turbines, we usually have to come in and bring in a rotor, or bring in a crane to drop the rotor. And you gotta bring in that crane again, uh, we always do that, there are some turbines out there where you are able to now kind of. Set the rotor to the side and lock it on to not have to bring it all the way down. Technology's evolving, um, but the point is, is that finding ways to make lower impacts. Or repeatable processes, better sustainability, uh, in not only how we install, but in how we maintain the projects. Um, with this, uh, I, I will say that an important piece of any ordinance in the county, you have to have a road use agreement. You have to have protections for your roads. Um, which, uh, slipped on me, I was, I was talking to, uh, Buke County the other day. And he said, well, you don't, you didn't, uh, I was looking over an ordinance for them, just to give them some feedback on, on projects, and. And he said, well, you didn't tell us that road use agreement, I just assumed that you would have one. So he says, no, we don't usually get projects this big in here, so we don't even. So he says, no, we don't usually get projects this big in here, so we don't even have that on our radar. I said, you need to have that on your radar. You need to have a road use agreement that protects your roads long-term. They make sure that when we're building a project, it's going to return the roads to the way that they were before the project started. Now, if you've ever done home remodeling, you know that while the project is going on, you're going to get some dust in the house, right? You're going to get some, some, some disturbance, right? And so you need to make sure that your road use agreement covers so that you can live with roads while the project is going on, when the project is done, it is as good or better. Uh, for, for some projects that we've been on, that road use agreement has said, uh, during school days, we will be out plowing the roads to make sure that buses can get by. And then we will apply water or do a brading of the road at the intervals to the buses. That was some of the, some of what we were focused on in one fifty-four. Others, we haven't had as much of a problem with them, uh, the roads. Uh, others, because it happened to be a super wet year, the roads became a problem. And so we had to increase our effort more in the roads just to keep them going. So yeah, like I said, just road use agreement is very important. Uh, we're in fact about office space, great place to be. Here's the inside of the cell. Not people get to look inside these very often. So you climb up the tower, 200, 300 feet in the ground and, uh, and this is what you're looking at. Um, cramped, but if you, there's a little door up here that you can go out and if you go out the door, really amazing view. So great pay, great exercise. If you might want to step. Um, alright. Uh, you wanted me to talk a little bit about batteries. So I can either pause and we can talk about wind or I can keep going about batteries. So as I started out talking about how, uh, wind and solar, we're going to power the grid and you'd be laughed out of the room. Batteries are the next big thing, right? Uh, even 10 years ago, when we were hearing about wind, everybody said, well, that's great. Your winds are, wind turbines are spinning at night and nobody's using energy. So what do you, are you going to hook a big battery to it? And at the time we're like, yeah, I wish they'd be really fun if they, if they were cost effective. Now they aren't. And technology has changed drastically in the last five to seven years on batteries to make them cost effective, make them affordable, and then make them safe. So batteries are revolutionizing the power grid and how we think about it. We think about battery storage, kind of, you know, you can see here, just in the last five years, the amount of batteries coming on the overall power grid is, is changing exponentially and it's going to continue that way. So this is a discussion that, you know, you guys are on the forefront of. In Iowa, we haven't needed them yet, but we will need them soon. Very soon, in the next couple of years. So it's important for you to start thinking about it now. And if you're going to crack open, uh, your ordinances to add something or to change something about wind, I encourage you to add something to a lot of the batteries as well. Alright, so here's what a, a big, uh, 100 megawatt battery site looks like, right? It's, it's just like truck trailers. Uh, it is not tall, it is not loud, it is just there, right? Uh, that's kind of what they are. And each one of these is filled with a, a whole bunch of tiny little batteries inside of them, like what you've got in your cell phone. Uh, we'll look at them here in just a second. There we go. So here's a look inside one of those containers. Each one of these, uh, little black dots is a little cooling fan on its own little battery, uh, tray, right? Uh, so each one is itself, it is sealed, is its own thing so that it does not expose to the environment, it does not, uh, leak, it is sealed as it is. Uh, and so this is what they have kind of now improved to is to have them all isolated and such. And as such, you've got all of your monitoring equipment to check, to monitor them so that you can detect before something goes wrong. Here is what a big container of batteries looks like, right? You've got your, uh, your, your HVAC system in there just to make sure that you're able to maintain a, a reasonable temperature inside. You've got your fire suppression equipment as appropriate. You've got your smoke and temperature detection and your insulation with the one hour barrier. One of the things that we find from a lot of fire departments is that when a battery fire happens, I, I have to say it because somebody's going to try and catch me on it. They always do. When a battery fire happens, more often than not, the fire department tells us to do is just let it burn itself out. And that's weird because when we deal with a house fire or a barn fire, our first response is get it out. What the fire department tells us is when we're dealing with a battery fire, so it's burning itself out, it'll burn itself out. Everybody will be safe. We'll go, go about our business. That's the type of change in thinking that we bring when we work with some of these things and how it's different than what you would deal with at your house. Uh, part of it is that you've got all kinds of different, um, you know, this is just a whole bunch of the different, um, safety and standards that they have to meet right now. Uh, so it, it, it really is, uh, drastically different, uh, light years ahead of where it was just five, 10 years ago. So we're really excited for the future in order to kind of bring batteries forward. Um, the big exciting consideration for batteries, it's just like having a, a truck yard, right? In that it's, 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 um, like trailer truck height equipment. So maybe 20 feet tall, not 30 feet, not 40 feet. Has very few moving parts. It's got a bunch of HVAC system. So it's got fans on, so you can hear the fans. So you're cited appropriately, like you would anything else, you can mitigate the sound of the fan. Uh, and, and it doesn't make much noise. Don't need a lot of people there, so you don't have a lot of plumbing going. And when you have the appropriate setbacks that you have to do with the buildings. So that, that really, uh, kind of concludes where I wanted to just bring you for some of the more detailed thinking that we bring in about how we do wind projects, how we do battery projects. Uh, and now we were, if any questions, you can.
Yeah, well, uh, move into just sort of a Q and A panel. We've got experts here. Um, we'll kind of start with the um, board reserve kind of initial question with the board supervisors and permission. Um, and then we'll open it up to the public just to kind of keep it orderly. I guess if you just have a question, lose your hand. So start with Jim.
Question for Justin. Uh, your batteries, you know, those fires out, a lot of them burned out. Where did you locate these battery storage places?
Well, um, we're not going to locate them in a tight residential area. Right? Uh, but anywhere that you would locate a normal uh, substation, right? Would, would be just fine. I mean, we are considering putting batteries, you know, in cer- certain substations because that kind of can help them. Not going to put 100 megawatt batteries like what I showed on the picture there, but you might have one or two of those trailers uh, in a battery area. Uh, but you're not going to do it on a substation that is completely urban and surrounded by homes. Uh, you're not even going to want to have several hundred feet of setback. Random feet of setback is, is pretty reasonable.
A far setback from any energy that might catch on fire a little bit.
I mean, uh, nature of energy and pressure.
Or in bills.
Yeah, so that's the thing is that they are putting the gravel areas. And so you don't have the sparks flying. You've got the gravel containment areas. And because of those setbacks that we've got within there from the fence, it's pretty self-evident.
50 feet or 200 feet?
Uh, let's see here.
Or what, what is it?
Yeah, I think it's between 50 and 100 feet is usually, usually what they've got. If we want to make sure we've got big enough to go to get, and I don't want to get compression caps in there, but.
Alright, thank you.
Lithium ion, average is a little different.
No, we're using mostly lithium ion, but there are a couple of different types of li- of lithium ion. Um, and so, yeah, we're seeing lithium ion, but that might change. Because two years ago, we were all time a lithium ion being the best thing. And then all of a sudden, you know, we're hearing new technology coming out that doesn't depend on the lithium as much. Uh, and is able to do other stuff. So it's a continually evolving process of what the best piece is. We've heard about salt air. Uh, or iron air ones where it's essentially a chemical composition where water rushes in and, and it kind of rusts these plates and the plates create electrons and that does it. Those are long duration. But that takes a lot of space, a lot more space than the other pieces do. So, you know, it's, it's just constantly evolving uh, on, on what's right and what's the right technology and what's the right sustainable technology to be able to get. Uh, so, but yeah, let's see, I'm on this kind of the answer today. I don't know if that could be the answer in years. Yep, so I, you know, they all, they all come different, right? But what we see is we're judging for a four hour duration battery. And so one of those trailers is maybe one to two megawatts of a four hour duration. Uh, that's the way that we think about our batteries.
And those can be placed anywhere on the grid then. They don't need to be right at the generation standpoint.
That's correct. Yeah, it really depends on what you're trying to achieve with them. Um, you can place them right next to generation sources and then dispatch them out on the power grid. You can place them right next to homes or in your more, uh, central serving, uh, substations. And that might, uh, provide some more redundancy and reliability if some other power, part of the power grid goes out. You might have a battery right there to continue to serve that area. Uh, otherwise, if you're setting them out where you've got your, your generation site, then maybe you're powering the battery when the wind is blowing and nobody's using electricity. And not having to go through the subset, not having to go through the transmission system as much. Right? There are different uses for batteries. We put a couple of batteries down in Weldon, Iowa because we had three hog dark, uh, hog buildings that, uh, all put solar on their roof and was blowing our circuit. And we had two choices, either, uh, grid cable or solar, and we didn't want to do that. Or spend about two to three million dollars in upgrades of the circuit to handle that. Instead, we were able to spend about one million dollars in battery. And that took care of the problem. It just acted as a giant capacitor. It just absorbed that energy. So we didn't have to spend the three million dollars on the power grid upgrade. And we're able to let them continue to do it. It took allowing us to think differently. And that one there was a Tesla battery. Located in the middle of the building. Uh, about 10 feet from the pump. So, again, it's kind of different.
The other questions from the members or board supervisors?
Alright, uh, you spoke to how quickly, you know, the difference in changes in the environmental aspects of things. Uh, have you had to shut down any existing turbines because of those changes that have come up?
Not permanent, no. Uh, but we do have a, a wind farm in Halloweek County, uh, near Grinnell that, uh, has some bats near it. And so we curtail operations. That's our fancy way of saying we shut them down. We have physically locked the rotors and shut them down when we know that there are certain conditions about. And that is, um, when the wind speeds are low enough. And when it is spring and fall, when we know the bats might migrate. Bats don't want to fly and migrate in high wind conditions. So when the wind is slow enough and during the certain types of year, then we actually curtail our operations and shut it down. That is one way that we're going to walk with that.
Yeah, if, if you have more questions, as we, we can, we can come back to you guys, of course. Um, so we can open up to the room if you have a question, um, of the audience there, um, if you're ready to raise your hand and so ahead.
Well, first of all, John, thank you. Thanks to the speakers and thanks to this panel. Um, Will, I think this should be for you because I read something about mid-America and automatic air detection systems. And since these folks are kind of forward-looking with their policy and what they're trying to do. Could you maybe explain what's just all here happening?
Yeah, so, um, I think you're referring to aircraft detection lighting systems. Okay, yeah, so I actually have a, I have a slide for it. One second. Appropriate slide. Just because it's a little easier to explain when I have a, a visual that kind of goes along with it. Alright, so.
Try to share it with you as well, so.
Yeah, it's up there. It's, it's gonna find. Alright, we just referenced that one then? I apologize. Sorry about that. It is shared through Teams though. Okay, so, um, aircraft detection lighting system. So this is something that we're excited about. So oftentimes in these ordinance hearings, we hear, or even from communities, you know, where we have, uh, wind farms already operating. One of the concerns we hear from residents is that, uh, the, the red FAA lights are on top of the wind turbines, which are mandated by the FAA. We do not have any say where they go, what the intensity is, which turbines get them or anything. That's all done through the FAA. So this is a, basically a radar system similar to something that you would see at an airport that's, um, continually monitors the airspace 24/7. And so the reason why those FAA lights are atop of the turbines is because they are over that 200 foot above ground level requirement the FAA has. And it's, uh, basically for airspace safety during, uh, low visibility and nighttime, uh, conditions. And so the reason they're in place is because at any given time, we can't prove that there's nothing in the airspace. Up until last year, so in Guthrie County, Iowa, um, we have a lot of wind farms over by Adair off of Interstate 80. Um, so in Guthrie County, Iowa, we installed our first aircraft detection lighting system project. We call it ADLS. Um, so basically what it does is allows us to monitor the airspace 24/7. And it allows us to basically have a proof of clearance that the airspace, um, is clear and doesn't have any low-flying aircraft in the area. And so what that looks like is there's basically an FAA determined zone for this. So what that means is anything that's over 200 feet, you have to have, uh, three miles of visibility outward um, horizontally from the, the nearest obstacle. So that's a wind farm boundary. Um, and then at least a thousand feet above tallest obstruction within the wind farm. And so whenever an airplane is not within that detection zone, we are able to shut the FAA lights off at nights. Um, are, so we commissioned this project in about October of last year. Um, our, our data thus far has produced, depending on the conditions and flight patterns, between 90, 95% reduction in the usage of the lights at night. Um, and like I said, it's primarily used to detect like smaller aircraft and lower, lower flying aircraft. So the commercial airlines going overhead at like 33,000 feet or so. Um, they will come up on the system, but they won't trigger it to turn those lights on because the, the turbines are, you know, above about 500 feet, 600 feet or so. Um, so they're not, you know, any hazards to commercial airplanes. It's mostly for your lower kind of, uh, uh, you know, lower flying, uh, helicopters, planes, gliders, those types of things. Um, so this is something that we're excited about. I know there's a few counties in the state of Iowa, I think Palo Alto County has this as a requirement. Um, I think Iowa County has a, as a requirement as well. Um, kind of some loose language in there, basically just saying if deemed feasible, um, the operator should install one. Um, but this is something that we're excited about. It's something that, you know, we've had positive feedback with, with our communities. Um, it's helped a lot with the, the light pollution during nighttime operations of the wind farms. So something to consider for, I guess, the commission board supervisors.
Thank you. Well, uh, any other questions?
Will, on the first line, you chose like 61%.
Yeah.
So.
So. That's not the goal right now. Say that. We need to uh to be quite frank. So. Uh the approach we've kind of taken is uh all of the above. Um so that's going to change over time. So right now we have a mix between nuclear, coal, hydroelectric, uh wind, gas and solar. Um but. We look at it from the viewpoint of a a three-legged stool. So we need reliability. We're you we utility. We supply power twenty-four seven to our customers. That's the expectation. Um we need affordability. We need to do these projects, uh you know, affordable price. Um and then we need sustainability as well. So the sustainability portion, you're looking at, you know, your winds, your solars, um right? Reliability right now largely comes from our thermal fleet, which is our coal units and our natural gas units. Um and our nuclear unit as well. Um that will probably change over time. Um with regulations in place, the likelihood of permitting a new coal plant is pretty much zero. Um, you know, there's a lot of uh utilities and independent system operators that are still looking at, you know, being combined cycle plants, natural gas. Uh peaker plants for grid stabilization and high load scenarios and stuff like that. So natural gas is still on the table. It's still a good option, but. This is the approach that we take. You know, we're constantly evaluating. This is a part of our Wind Prime filing with the I U B that we just got approval on in December. One of the portions of that is looking at alternative generation sources and new technologies. So looking at. Um hydrogen generation as a fuel source potentially either through electrolysis or through combustion. Um looking at the new S M R small modular reactors for nuclear potentially. You know, there are a lot. There's a lot of concepts out there from, you know, various types of um. Uh manufacturers of nuclear facilities that are, you know, they're much safer, they're much smaller overall. So um. I guess what I'm trying to say is it's constantly evolving, constantly changing. We're not counting out now. We're going to continue to operate those plants as long as we can. Um we did have some facilities shut shut down um at our Walter Scott over in Council Bluffs and our Neil. Uh coal facilities over in Sioux City um from a uh regulation standpoint, emission standpoint. Uh we still have two online at each of those respective locations, though. We continue to operate them. We continue to keep them up to date. Um from an emission standpoint, because we we need them right now for grid stabilization and reliability, because the wind and solar are intermittent. So.
Yeah, that battery for hours.
Um not for the the scale of what you're talking compared to like a coal-fired power plants or a natural gas plants. Um they do have. You know, very specific cases that they can be utilizing are very optimal for grid stabilization, power outages, redundancies, as Justin kind of tou- uh touched on a little bit. And then they're looking at also, you know, different, um you know, chemical batteries, mechanical batteries, uh electrochemical batteries as well, different. Just compositions of elements, chemicals to try to. Create the long duration, short duration, specific use case scenarios and that kind of stuff. That's far off in the future.
So, we didn't, how how prevalent is it in other states?
I mean, very prevalence in Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Iowa, Dakotas.
Illinois.
Illinois.
Texas has so much trouble then it gets cold that we get a side device up here.
Yeah, so that has a variety of reasons. Um so they're part of a completely different transmission system. They're part of uh ERCOT. Um so Texas is essentially its own power grid. It doesn't have as many redundancies built in as like the MISO system, the PJM system over on the East Coast. Um ref- referencing back to that, I think, twenty twenty-one storm, there was a lot of. I've read some papers about it and the combination, the ice coming in and the cold coming in as well, um throws up a lot of the turbines. And I mean. These turbines are rated for pretty low temperatures. Um the turbines that we have are rated for, you know, ambient temperatures down to things like twenty degrees below Celsius or thirty-five degrees below Celsius. Um but even below there, you know, you start to see kind of the tapering effect for the operations of the turbines. Um but then you also in Texas had, you know, a lot of. So as a gas engineer before this, a lot of the regulators froze up. Um so if you have a nice storm, check your home regulator. Every gas meter has a regulator with it. They need. Air to breathe in order to regulate pressures correctly. So a lot of those failed down in Texas as well. They iced up. Um they weren't able to actually, you know, pump the gas. The gases have kind of shut down more or less, and that affected prices down there. So there there's kind of a multitude of reasons for what happened in Texas.
Um is there a certain like weatherization practices that you think appear universally like?
Yeah.
Like Texas's issues?
Yeah, so we we have like cold weather packages, which helps us get down to that thirty-five below Celsius number um for our turbine operations. You know, basically just, you know, allows us to heat the turbines if necessary, um better lubricants in there as well. Um the raw materials that go in just give us stand those temperatures and operate at those lower temperatures as compared to the kind of, I'll call it base model turbine that you could install. Without all those kind of add-ons to it. So we've invested in it. We live in a very cold weather climate. Um and we even that week where we had a negative thirty-five outside, we had turbines operating. So it's pretty windy that day. So.
And and. Iowa being a regulated state, the people who are building these or owning them. Um have obligations to serve their customers. Whereas in in Texas, you don't have that. You have the opportunity to sell energy. And if your stuff breaks down, you don't sell it. Maybe you lose some revenue. But it's a difference between an opportunity to sell versus an obligation to serve. And so we've got more investments, as we'll say. We've got the cold weather packages to keep the oil hot. Or warm as it gets super low in order to allow those turbines to continue to operate. Our gas facilities, our peaker plants, other uh thermal facilities that we've got are usually enclosed in buildings. So we can continue to make sure the water pipes that go into them stay warm and don't freeze. All right, we've got other considerations that we make up here in Iowa, not only because we're used to living in the cold, but also because we have the obligation to serve, not just the opportunity to sell.
Anybody else?
I got a question for Will. Yep, and you. Um. They proposed a system along the old Sioux line. Uh, you know, to get the energy to the Mississippi and down across Rockford, across Mississippi. Who's who's funding it? You know?
You're talking about a transmission line?
Yeah, there's a transmission line.
Sioux Green.
Yeah, Sioux Green uh direct the current on.
Yeah, so uh i- if that project moves forward, right, that is an independent producer. Or an independent entity that is that is paying for that pro- that project. That's not you. That's not. Uh Iowans who wouldn't benefit from it. That's from somebody who's who's getting independent from that.
In every.
I don't know the name. And the Sioux Greens is is what they're called. They're an they're an they're an independent entity.
It's a it's a group of private companies that are.
Always associated with the the turbines that are wanting to be.
The only real association that I'm aware of, and just keep in mind, I I I only am familiar with it because I was the former zone, certain county zoning administrator, and they talked to us. They were looking, going through our county. Uh, um is that is they just, it's a private company that was looking to. I I I would imagine this is a little bit of speculation on my part uh that, you know, they're looking to basically be able to sell power. From projects that are generated in our area. Um.
In our area, and we wouldn't get that. I mean, it goes somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, you can only, as these guys are aware, you can all, we're at, at least in. In our immediate future, we're at, we were at capacity. Um you can only use what you have demand for, and so we were using a hundred percent of our capacity in our area. But I believe new transmission uh is opening up some opportunities. I know we're in a very good area for you guys to help maybe uh elaborate on that. I you know better than I would, but. Uh there's new opportunities to for grid resi- resilience and being able to shift power to areas where demand is.
So Mid-American, I mean, your locals can provide for Iowa, right? You're you don't have anything to do with that.
I'm not aware of this. I wrote down, I know, because I haven't heard of it before. I apologize. Why? I apologize. I'm not involved on the transmission side. I haven't heard of it before. So.
You you know, thi- this is just the, I think everybody remembers the Rock Island Clean Line. There was uh that was trying to go through, that was trying to seek um private easements. Oftentimes too eminent domain. Uh and and this is, I don't know if it's the same group, but it's just a different group. And instead of using the private easements, they're, they found a different way to go through. You know, we're, I I'm agnostic to it, but what I think about is oftentimes for our thermal facilities, our coal facilities, the coal that we get is from uh. You know, the the.
Pot River Basin.
Yes, Kirby, uh Pot River Basin over in uh Montana and whatnot. So it's it's the same concept of you take the fuel from where it exists. And transport it to where it needs to get used. All right, so.
I know that uh RW needs to regard it as funny to look at. I got a lot of things that are funny.
Oh, cool.
Is there any other questions in the room?
Yeah, thank you both for uh the presentations. It's was really good, really thoughtful and and complete. Uh how does uh. Integrated resource planning, how does that factor in? You know, you were talking about your mix, all the above. I know that Alliant is your home base is in Wisconsin, and they may, the P U C there are. Public Utilities Commission is is what we call our I U B here, the Utilities Board. Uh how does that uh sort of resource planning fit into both Alliant and Mid-American?
I'll let you answer first.
A little bit deep for.
Yeah, so a light corporation, right, is the utility holding company. We have two utilities, Wisconsin Power and Light. They're based in Madison. Interstate Power and Light, New Orleans Light Energy, we're based in Cedar Rapids. We're not a Wisconsin company. We're Cedar Rapids, right? Um, all right, so with that, and and, you know, if you think about it just a little bit beyond that, right? Light Energy is the conglomeration of three different utilities that came together here in Iowa, I E Iowa Southern and I E S. Mid Amer- Mid-American, you know, y- you guys are the are are the group of four different utility companies that came together. Uh so if you think just about where we've come from, right? Um and, you know, for Alliant. The the resource plan that we do is we're under obligations to serve our customers. And so at any moment, we need to have a certain amount of megawatts available to generate. In order to meet however much our customers need. And every year we we set a new standard for this is how much our customers use in the last year. We have to have that amount plus a whole bunch in reserve. And so we're thinking, what's the best way for us to meet that obligation for our customers? Um considering the location where our customers are and the resources that we happen to have. Available to us. In Wisconsin, we've got more hydro because we've got dammed up rivers uh that are able to generate hydro. In Iowa, we tried with hydro back in the sixties and seventies. Uh we don't have enough rivers that especially don't have enough drop in elevation for the dead height. In fact, one of the hydro uh generators that we used to own here in Iowa is now in Brazil. So.
Yeah, and I guess from, you know, Mid-American's perspective and Justin, that's our touch on a little bit, you know, so in the state of Iowa, it's not a requirement for integrated resource planning. Um but, you know, from the utilities perspective, it's mostly what's our obligation to our customers to serve. So it's kind of the three-legged stool that I kind of touched on. So when we do our. Resource evaluation studies and our modeling behind it, you know, when we're looking at. Picking which generation source to use. You take all these parameters from SMEs, from subject matter experts, you talk with the industries. Put your parameters in, it spits them out. And what we're looking for is, you know. Reliability, what are the resources that are going to, you know, perform reliable? What is our current resource mix? Can we meet that reliability standard with what we have? Do we need additional reliability on the grid? Affordability, which resource is going to fit um into our generation mix right now? That's going to, you know, not come at additional or burdening costs to our customers and our ratepayers. Um and then sustainability as well. And so it it all kind of factors in. There's a lot of, you know, parameters they have to put into the modeling, a lot of different situations as well. But those are, you know, the three things that really kind of drive our resource evaluation studies that we do internally at Mid-American.
But neither one of your utilities are mandated uh to do integrated resource planning. That's just something you do as internally?
Correct. Not in the state of Iowa. We are not mandated.
So Wind Prime into part of that docket?
So in Wind Prime, yes, thank you for bringing that up. In Wind Prime, there was a uh. A resolution resolution that uh was come to between Mid-American and the interveners within the Wind Prime project. Um and so they will in the future be a part of that resource evaluation studies that we do. We'll have to, you know, turn over our. Basically, files or documents to them. Um that way they can run their own modeling. It's basically a a public auditing check.
Old cards is what you're saying.
Correct, yeah, like we give them all the information. They can take the modeling. They can, you know, run it in different scenarios as well. It's basically a way to kind of audit us.
Yeah.
Um to determine, you know, that we are making the best choice for Iowa, for our customers, to meet those, you know, three goals, sustainability, reliability.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions in the room?
Okay.
Uh after a landowner signing easement uh and wind turbine company has built a turbine on their property. And someone comes in, digging the tiled edge and gets into that transmission line. Uh who's liability then? Does the landowner have ultimate liability? It's someone he contracted with, gets into that transmission.
You know, I have to go with the the actual, the the legal of the of the language. Um but uh, you know, it's, no, the landowner, uh more often than not. The landowner is not responsible for that. That is, that is them. Uh and that's what we're able to call locates and whatnot, just like you would with a pipeline running through your through your property. You gotta call it. Well, if somebody calls in, you know, i- if you call on a contractor that does work and hits it, it's pipeline, not landowners, it's responsible, it's person doing the thing.
Andy, you had a question?
Um have either of your companies looked into like new types of wind energies that are not turbines?
A lot of novel ideas out there. Um I've seen some words, you know, kind of on tracks that that catch the winds. Um. Nothing that's really, from at least from Mid-American's perspective, nothing that's really reached a point of maturity where it is economically. Justifiable for our customers. You got to remember that a lot of these decisions, as I was kind of talking about with the resource evaluation studies. Um the affordability is a very big portion of that. You know, we don't want to um be installing new generation sources that are, you know, on the the cutting edge. They're, you know, still. High cost, high risk, and that's a large reason why you haven't seen battery adoption up until recent years as well. Technology's been there. It's just how do you get it more cost effective? How do you get it more reliable? So. Um we haven't looked at really any other types of wind energy, I guess you could say. I know that there's a few types of uh like vertical axis turbines. Um not sure necessarily what the outputs on those are respectively compared to horizontal axis turbines. And then then there's also some other novel designs, I'll call them, that are more, I would say, kind of personal use as opposed to utility scale use. Um so.
Just wondered how far off that was in our future with the technology company. You know, putting millions of dollars in turbines and then something else comes along that's better and smaller and cheaper. Um. And um Will, are you are you guys planning or ready to buy the InVenergy project or what's?
No, so um I mean, honestly, we haven't had any discussions. I I don't know where it's at in developments. I have no clue. What the project looks like, size or anything like that. We have brought bought many projects from InVenergy in the past. I'm not going to hide from that. Um they develop a lot of projects across the US, not just the state of Iowa. Um we're always looking to build on our our generation assets. I'm not going to say that, I'm not going to say never will we buy a project in Floyd County. To date, I don't know where the project's at in developments. We haven't had any discussions on it, so. I don't have any knowledge or can't really speak to that at this point.
So so I understand battery storage better. So essentially, if we're producing more than we need at the moment, we'll stick it in the battery. And then hold on, and then it can only sit in the battery for hours before it needs to be used?
Nope, it'll it'll, what we, what we look at is how long will the battery discharge that quantity of energy? And so it it can stay in the battery for days, weeks, months. Right? But once you start capping, just like your your phone battery, how long is it going to provide me that quantity of energy? And that's what we measure it by. We say, how many megawatts and how long is it going to last?
And so that battery storage could be used here, it could go on a transmission line somewhere else, or would it have to be? I mean, if it's a battery, does it have to be local?
No, it it would go on the power grid just like everything else. So. No, it it would go on the power grid just like everything else. So just that it would be. Dispatched with the word we use, called up to use. And it would go on the exact same wires, we'd just dispatch it at the time that we needed it. And and part of that is. Um uh uh if we just dive one layer deeper, right, into how the power grid operates, right? We've got thermal plants that have been running for years, decades. And decades and decades. And oftentimes, what I hear from some of our 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 coal engineers, right, is for a coal plant power plant to go from coal. The full tilt, it can be up to a day. Because you can only heat that boiler about a hundred degrees an hour to keep those welds from from breaking. So if you go from coal plants not running, they're running. It takes about an an hour every hundred degrees, and so it'd take them about a day, you have to pull it off. So if you say, you know, on a on a Saturday, you don't need the energy. So you shut off your coal plant, so you're not making the emissions and you're not, you know, you're giving it a rest. On Sunday or on Monday morning, you you've got a, you know, serious plan and you can get that running again, right? Um so oftentimes, coal plants like diesel. Run it, set it and go. Never shut that truck off, right? Set it and go. Um. Then you've got some gas fire, some gas uh facilities. Uh right, that our newest uh gas uh base load gas plate plant in Marshalltown. Uh was when it was built in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and still is probably close, was the most efficient gas plant in the entire world. And it can go from zero to half output in a matter of five minutes. Up to full output in about twenty-five minutes. And you've got your wind farms that can go from zero, no wind, to the wind is blowing, so it's infinitely on. You can go from your solar that's instantly on, instantly off with the clouds. Instantly on, and and when the clouds come, it's not instantly off, right, it's just less. Uh and so what what we're trying to do is manage, instead of having some facilities running twenty-four seven through sixty-five, no matter what. We're trying to manage our resources better so that we've got the right amount of power when we need it. And so that means turning those gas engines on and off as needed. That means drawing from the battery to get you through the hump. Uh right, it just means that instead of set it and forget it. Now you've got, let's monitor it. What do we need? Okay, our load's going up, we gotta provide that power. Okay. Load's going down, you can shut those resources down. And you can kind of play play this all the time. And at the end of the day, what are you doing? You're you you're creating less emissions. You are burning less fuel, incurring less costs. So that might be more than what you're looking for, but that's 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 where the power grid's going to.
And then just to kind of, one more thing to add on that, sorry, but um being a part of the MISO transmission system, there are also. Certain scenarios where we can be called upon by the system operator to dispatch specific resources. Um you know, the very tightest of demand scenarios, talk middle of the summer, middle of the winter, when it's the hottest, or the cold, so. It'd be scenarios, you know, for like a battery system similar to a coal plant, to a thermal natural gas fired plant. Um that are more on-demand resources as opposed to intermittent. Um we could potentially be called on by MISO to dispatch that resource in either, in order to. Meet the, you know, load requirements or for grid stabilization or any other scenario. Potentially, that MISO would need that generation source for.
It's more up in the manager basis, right? Sometimes the state might need that statement myself.
Correct, yeah, and so that's kind of. The beauty of being a part of an independent system operator is that it's a very large territory with, you know, you're talking. Tens of thousands of gigawatts of potential generation across it, and so. You have unfor- you have unplanned outages, you have forced outages for, you know, different generating sources across the fleet, across the fleet. You might trip up plants at, you know, coal plants or a natural gas plant or something like that, you go offline, you thought you had three hundred megawatts and you don't anymore. Or is that additional load coming from MISO can, you know, in certain scenarios, call upon different generators to, you know, start. Producing energy onto the grid in order to meet that shortfall, you know, match your frequencies on the grid. Have some resiliency as well, so. There's some scenarios, yeah.
We have a question in the middle, sorry.
What's the life expectancy of that battery?
Uh between twenty and thirty years.
Well, uh back to the batteries again, uh can't um the batteries used to shave shave the peak, so to speak? Uh fill up the batteries at night? And then discharge them during peak times and peak load times, so you don't have to turn on the peak, the thermal peaker plants?
Yep.
And then, aren't we seeing some places around the country that have day, time of day pricing? That people are actually setting up batteries to fill them up at night when it's cheapest and then. Uh through something they call arbitrage, and they sell it uh back to the grid when uh the prices are highest during peak? We seen anything like that?
Uh it not here yet, but it uh, you know. Again, as as I started, I can't predict the future. I expect something like that to come at some point as. As the power grid continues to evolve, right? Um change is is gonna happen, and that's gonna happen in in all a variety of ways. So there's no one resource that can answer the call for everything. You know, as you heard, Will, the three-legged stool, all the different resources, and that's what we're just trying to get across is that. Uh as utility companies, we need lots of different options because they each have their pros and they each have their cons. We need lots of different options in order to fulfill that reliability, affordability, sustainability.
Will you see more home generation? Standbys.
Uh I, you know, I don't, I don't.
So it chokes us up with the base?
Uh we don't, we don't see that because the the math doesn't pencil out. That's what we hear. Math doesn't pencil out. If you are at the end of a circuit. Uh and you've always got your power going out, right? You might have a um a generator on site. We've heard about those, we know those exist. Um. And you know, oftentimes, a quick upgrade of the power grid and. They don't use a generator more, right? But yeah, we're not, we're not seeing that yet. The math doesn't pencil out yet. Uh not in Iowa.
So another question over there?
Yeah, uh Justin, you, as a matter of fact, that these folks ought to have something called a road use agreement in their policy.
Yes.
You probably also expect and maybe be able to elaborate on something called the decommissioning policy.
Oh, yeah, completely, yep.
What would your expectations be in in that area?
Yeah, so uh decommissioning agreement, so we we talked about a road use agreement, matter of fact, you gotta have that. Right, and a decommissioning agreement as well. Uh what you're, what you're doing is you're you're setting expectation, that's the big one. It's really, you're setting expectations for what's it gonna look like when the project is done. Um great thing about solar, uh right now, when we pull the solar project out of the ground. You will even know it was ever there. Right, unlike a mall or a big elevator that's gonna come in and leave the concrete pilings and whatnot, solar project when it comes out, it's gone. The land turns back to natural. Uh wind as well, we talked about the four feet, right? What does it look like when you're done? What are the expectations? Uh a lot of times, we've got, one of the things we didn't even touch on are the entrance roads. Uh from the road to the turbine site. What we hear from landowners is one of the best things about a a a wind project, is not the wind. It's not uh the revenue from the turbine, it's that entrance door. Because that's what allows them to get into the field, they're able to use those, and they park their trailers on there. Uh and they're able to, because it's reinforced gravel usually. And able to get into their field a lot better than they ever could before, especially during uh wet spring uh whatnot, so.
As a farmer, I think you're all wet. I totally disagree with you. Taking landowner production, uh that's something that no farmer wants to do.
Well.
You're kind of grasping there a little bit.
I I I vigorously uh disagree with that. What we hear is is well-placed entrance roads. Oftentimes, we go right on the fence line, but sometimes we'll go right in the middle of the field, that's where the farmer wants it. Uh and and they, that is a big deal. We hear a lot about those.
Sticking with the decommissioning now at the moment.
Yeah.
You you recommend a bond and.
It depends, it depends on the different entity. Uh as a regulated utility, right, we have a a a higher. W- we we have to answer the Utilities Board. And so we have got uh Mid American, Line Energy as your regulated utility providers in the state. We have got different requirements that we have to fulfill. Not every wind developer has the same requirements. So sometimes you need to have a way to make sure that there's money available. Whether that's through a bond, whether that's through a rental guarantee or some other sur- surety. Um you need to have something in there that says, we want to make sure that we've got the value. Needed that the county can access in case something goes up.
It would be a performance bond, you agree?
No, not a performance bond, it's a surety bond, it's a surety bond. So.
Um and some of your projects, what are the top couple complaints you've gotten from a non-participating? Uh landowner, a just adjacent landowner, and how have you mitigated those concerns?
Yep, so uh oftentimes, what we get is, I didn't know enough, right? Um or that uh you you know, they 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 don't like seeing them, they don't like hearing them. Right, those are, those are the big ones, because I don't like seeing it, I don't like hearing it. Uh so how do you mitigate that? You have the appropriate setbacks. Right, a setback that's fair and allows a product to be built, but not something that's so onerous that. Picks on wind as opposed to any other thing that a a landowner could build on their property. Right, uh we've got to understand that landowners could build in uh a, you know, giant silos right there on their fence line. Um and the other, and the neighbor couldn't say anything about it, depending on your zoning. Uh and so you might look at giant silos. Um so, right, so it's just that balance of how do you make sure that you provide something that's safe? And and you know, reasonable for your neighbors, but not something that's so onerous that makes it really hard to build. Um those are really the two biggest complaints that we've seen. I don't know, if you've got anything else to add?
Yeah, I'd say aesthetics is a big one. Um that's obviously very hard to mitigate. They are five hundred foot tall wind turbines. Um sound is one as well. Um on one of our more recent. Projects, we have installed um. Basically just mitigation measures from, you know, landowners that voice concern or had complaints or, you know, based on modeling, anything like that. Um a lot of that is addressed from the citing side of things as well, so the county has the requirements. Um and. So like when we're talking sound requirements, I always kind of akin it to a setback, so. Um you know, if you have too strict of a of a sound requirement, you know, ten decibels, which is hardly audible, anything like that. Um that's essentially going to be a mandatory setback, you know, sound can only travel so far, dissipates over a distance. Um so it's trying to, you know, as Justin said, find that balance of. Where does the nuisance kind of come into play? And then as a developer, you know, trying to develop responsibly. You begin to microcite those turbines so that, you know, when you have adjacent landlords who aren't participating. They don't feel those, you know, negative effects as much as someone who, you know, might be participating and seeing the financial benefits of the project potentially. Um one we also hear is shadow a lot of times, a lot of county ordinance hearings, you hear people talk about shadow as well. Um that's another one that's, it's kind of difficult. There's best practices that we try to utilize. Um for citing, similar to sound, it's the microciting, it's doing the modeling on the front end to determine what the topography looks like. Um different horizon lines throughout the year and what that shadow expectations can be, and then moving in turbines appropriately to try to. Mitigate those effects to non-participating landowners. Um but there's a plethora of counties that have, you know, shadow requirements, how many. Um hours within a an annual timeframe, you're allowed to cast a shadow on a non-participant's property. Um and then I've also seen, you know, a good kind of workaround for the county with that is, you know, you can allow waivers for it if you've entered into an agreement. If you're a participating landowner, um those requirements should be lessened because you're, you know, voluntary sign off your land for it. Um you're covering your property, so it's a way to kind of, you know, skew toward the participants who are seeing some of the benefits and those who don't want to participate, trying to mitigate those impacts. We've seen, you know, roughly, was it thirty hours, thirty to forty hours, this kind of. Industry average that we've seen for, you know, ordinances and best practices.
That's for years, right?
For a year, yeah, yep. Is there anybody else in the room that has questions?
Just one more clarification, Will, you were talking about wind farms being maybe three thousand acres. But the actual footprint of a turbine itself, plus the access roads. What's the average land use of uh of one wind turbine, half an acre?
Uh usually, yeah, it's about half an acre, the three quarters of acre, depends on topography, depends on setbacks and regulations, you know. You have a larger resident setback, property line setback, you'll go further into a field. Uh but it's usually, we average it out about half to three quarters.
So I've driven all over the state and I try to count turbines and. You can say usually they're about a hundred. So a a wind farm that's a hundred turbines. The natural land use would be less than a hundred acres.
Be between fifty and thirty-five acres approximately. I mean, permanently taken out of use for the operations of that.
Yeah, thirty years.
Yeah, until we have to go back to decommission and take that road out.
So it's not three thousand acres taken out of production?
No, that's that's the amount of, you know, land that would be covered over a boundary, but the actual acres out of production will be what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Um I, I was going to go from Invenergy, I was the project manager for the Chicasaw Wind Energy Center. Uh we sold that project over to Mid American. As a average uh for permanent disturbance, uh with the turbines and access roads combined. It was zero point six acres for that project. Really similar, even less than what uh what was saying.
Um we have a few people on the line, are they able able to talk to you? Yeah, if if you made sure, if you have any questions on the computer, does anybody have any questions? Just wanted to give you that opportunity.
So it's. To the media people and.
Okay, oh, it's Bob, not a.
His newspaper. Radio and Will.
Yeah, does the board or commission have any questions?
I just have a comment, and my comment is, please do make, like what Justin said, please do make sure. That you have a good decommissioning um policy in your ordinance. It is really important to count that. Because you can, uh when. You know, when I go and talk on behalf of right to trial, uh to other counties, they all have. A good decommissioning. Uh on in their ordinance, for the part of decommissioning, and you're sure that. Whether you decide, whether you want to make sure whatever you're doing can be. Um looked at after every five years to make sure of the price. Uh of surety bond is the right amount. I have noticed five years is the. The timeline, you look at that every five years. The county that you can to make sure the price is appropriate for the surety bond. I mean, is is decommissioning happen very often though?
Well, it will.
I mean, but has it, I mean, because you usually just put up, like we build them.
Well, the lease, the leases have a have an expiration date. Oftentimes, the leases that we have, that we sign are for a total up to a maximum of fifty years. So.
I mean, I'm not saying we don't need one, I'm just saying, have you, have there been any projects that have been?
Are we old enough to, or any of the projects you go on, old enough to get to that point?
There's a couple turbines that were removed because of uh. Uh uh peculiarities in the zoning, they had to take a couple turbines out, but they were onesies and twosies, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure which entity that was.
No, but that happened.
That's like southeast Iowa.
Yeah, it happens sometimes.
Uh you you need one.
Yeah.
You you need one. Uh we've not seen them though. We have had other utility assets decommissioned though, that's a common commonplace. Uh uh other uh thermal units that no longer exist. Um you know, went through a decommissioning process as well. Oftentimes, those aren't. Um there's not a decommission plan issued for those, but the the new renewable assets are seeing those. You know, that's that's.
So there was a turbine that got put up that can never work. Then does that fall into the deep, like is it required to be taken down? Then does that fall into the deep, like is it required to be taken down or?
So, yeah, so it really just depends on the plan, right? Uh, some of the, some of the plans. Uh, what they've got is a protection saying if if the asset doesn't uh work, doesn't generate for twelve months, twelve consecutive months. Then it needs to be removed. Uh, oftentimes what we see is that. You know, if uh, if the asset doesn't work for twelve months and there's obviously no work being done to repair it, right? That's where you as a board need to have that discretion on when is somebody actively working to repair this and when are they not? Right? Uh, some of the long lead time, long lead items though that we've got for equipment. For example, the large main power transformers that we install in the substations, all the electricity goes to the main power transformer. And that's what connects to the power grid and goes out. Main power transformers have gone from a twelve to thirteen month lead item to now a thirty-six and plus. Month lead item. So if the main power transformer goes out. Right? And if we can't bring a spare or something like that, we might have an issue. And so that's where we say, look. We want to have some of that flexibility so we can work with the board, but yeah, you need to have that protection so that if it's obvious, then nothing's working.
John, you probably know which were the four turbines by NIAC or the one that has never turned?
Yeah, that's a. Operated by a small developer. Um, I'm not sure, um. Exactly what the status of that is as far as it's, whether it's a disrepair or they're just not, their power purchase agreement. Is not up to date and they're not able to sell power to the, so I don't know whether that's a maintenance issue or not. Um. Uh, that'd just be an individual project issue.
So if the, if it was in the ordinance?
Yeah, if if you say like, I think it probably depends on like what an ordinance says in particular, whether it's like private water.
Yeah, Tom, Trey Hearn with Next Era Energy, we we went through a, we didn't really decommission the entire. Facility, but we did, uh. We did a repower, um, we did a repower, removed several turbines. Just passed up here, so um, you can drive out there and be happy to show you the locations and you can, you can look at them on Google Earth, right? Go to the site.
Yeah, I guess.
I think it was a successful decommissioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I should have thought of that one. Uh, so the wind farm south of Clear Lake. Um, used to be fifty-five smaller turbines and then they wasn't really repower, it was more of a redevelopment, I would maybe call it. Uh, they actually decommissioned fifty-five small turbines and returned it back to farmland. Um, and removed all the infrastructure down to four feet, it's that's in the, that's in the county ordinance and it was part of their, what you call especially use permit. Um, uh, so that was a successful decommissioning. Uh, when I was on the administrator during that whole process, I didn't receive any complaints during that. Um, so. That was a particularly successful one, I would say, if you want to call that a uh, full decommission, whatever, so.
Uh, most of the community colleges have renewable energy training programs, where they're training wind technicians and solar installers. And like at Kirkwood and Cedar Rapids, they put up a Clipper wind turbine. Well, Clipper is out of business and. They can't get parts for this turbine anymore, but they still train on it. They train on safety, they train on uh power, tower climbing and things like this. Well, it no longer produces electricity, which is a shame, but it's still a useful turbine for training and uh and education, so. Uh, community colleges are kind of a different uh breed.
Is there any other?
Anything further? If not, um, thank you uh for presenting that, we we learned some things there. Uh, and thank you for our guests who came here. We're very proud of this facility. And so there are two ways out of here, one was kind of up up the alley. But Heidi has agreed to light up the upstairs. And you can go up the elevator or you can go up the stairway and get out into the parking lot, correct? And.
Thank you.
And then. Justin, you said that you talked about some drainage tile system, we want to show you. What hand-dog tile is. That's what essentially this facility was originally. For the Spossel and Prairie Center State Preserve Park, and you'll see it's a marvelous, uh, actually. People digging tile that's still used and replaced out still works, so.
Excellent.
All right, so you can go up and take a look at our fabulous center and uh, thank you all for coming inside.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, uh, you're both enjoying.